Good because has been set.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. The time is now five oh two. I call to order the May sixteen twenty twenty-three Policy and Governance Committee meeting. My name is Albert Stone Reeves, Chair of the Policy Governance Committee and Student Member of the Board. I bring the great pleasure to welcome everyone tonight, and we will start with introductions of our committee members, board members, and administration staff.
Board Member Walter Field.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Walt.
Board Member Walter Field, Vice Chair of Policy and Governance Committee. Good evening.
Judy McInnes Murray, Board Member and Member of Policy and Governance Committee, also Board Chair. Good evening.
Hi. Hi, good evening, everyone. Pamela Boozer Struther, District Three, Board of Education Member and Member of this committee.
Good evening, Sharon Dan, Board of Education Office Director.
Good evening, Doug Strater, Chief of Accountability.
Good evening, Robin Welsh, Director of Government Relations Compliance and Procedures.
Good evening, Rihanna McCarter, Manager of People Accounting and School Boundaries.
Good evening, everyone. Dennis Woodley III, with the Law Office of Shipley and Horn, Board Counsel.
Good evening, Cindy Abbott, I was Administrative Secretary.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone.
If I may, we also have John Wooden with us from People Accounting School Boundaries as well. Yeah? Right, I'm sorry. I missed the first part. I was adjusting my volume.
No worries. We're just doing introductions.
Okay, so I'm John Wooden, with people, specialist for people accounting. First, just County Public Schools.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone. We have a quorum that has been met, therefore may have a motion to adopt the May sixteen twenty twenty-three meeting agenda.
So moved.
Okay.
It's been properly moved in second to adopt tonight's agenda. Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion passes, and the agenda is adopted. Approval of committee meeting, meeting minutes. I have a motion to approve the April eighteen twenty twenty-three meeting minutes.
Move to adopt the April.
Eighteen.
Eighteenth meeting minutes.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second to approve the April eighteen meeting minutes. Any objections? Hearing no objection, motion passes, and the minutes are approved. Moving on to public comment. There's one registered public comment speaker this evening. Ms. Adeline is Ms. Wingfield here.
As of right now, she's not.
Okay. So we will move along and just let me know if she called, she joins the call. To move to our legislative update, Ms. Welsh, do you have a made legislative committee meeting update?
So there hasn't been a made legislative committee meeting, so I have nothing to report from May, but I do know that today was the last day for the governor to sign bills into effect, and so I think everything's been signed, or nothing's been vetoed, at least I should say. And many of the bills that we have talked about in the past, they have passed, so we will be working hard on the administration and to put together a document that shows what are the, what are the things that we need to do to implement to make sure we're in compliance with the law.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Colleagues, any questions?
I don't have a question, Chair Everos, Serong Ruiz, but I attended a training session that John Williams had yesterday, and it was a, he, it was a synopsis of all bills that passed. And I will forward that to you. Our bills were not mentioned by House Bill name or anything, and we did not go into any in-depth discussion about those bills, but he focused pretty much on the bills that would include extra work for the administration. So I'll forward that to you guys so that you can read it, but it's a, it's a different group from the one that he had given us through the legislative committee. Okay?
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. All right. We move to our blueprint implementation update. Ms. Boozer Strutter?
Yeah, thank you so much, Chair. I did receive from Dr. Libby Strategic Initiatives Officer and Blueprint Coordinator a written report the other day before the agenda was posted, and I would like to request that this May fifteenth document be added to this, added to the agenda or added as a follow-up to ensure that it's associated with the meeting. The, as you know, Dr. Libby oversaw the plan drafting with a team that I think approached about a hundred stakeholders in the system, including board members, and the approval process through MSD and AIB continues. There was a minor revisions where questions were sent back, and those have already gone back and forth between PG CPS and MSD, and now we're included in a revision group that are moving from MSD Plan Review, Review to recommend MSD submits recommendations to the AIB, the Accountability Board, the blueprint, so those processes are outlined in the documents submitted by Dr. Libby. And one request that I had of her is to help determine the how this fits for which board meeting it would make sense for the work session on this final plan that gets through MSD and AIB. And those revised plans are being posted to, to our website where this is housed, so I will, and we'll note that as well. And I'll stop there if there's any questions, or if Vice Chair Fields would like to add anything from the, you know, his oversight work on this as well.
I, I just want to commend again our staff for their work in submitting the plan. Prince George's County Public Schools is a leader in embracing the blueprint for Maryland's future. We have a little time because all plans won't be approved until July, but I think we should be very satisfied and very encouraged by the work of our staff on this, and I look forward to when our plan is formally finally approved, making sure that we follow its implementation to the letter.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair Fields, and I definitely want to second, you know, Dr. Libby's work as a coordinator is, she is also, you know, a colleague to the blueprint coordinators from around the state, and you know, our collaborative relationship, I think, is, you know, very, very good between board and blueprint coordinator, and I'm really pleased with that, that will serve us well and our students well, so I guess, right, unless there's any questions, I will conclude there.
Thank you, colleagues. Any questions? Okay, okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you, Ms. Boozer Strutter. All right, moving along to now we have three policies for discussion, colleagues. We adhere to the five-minute, three-minute rules of discussion. Our first policy will be the policy geographic boundaries of attendance areas and the consolidation of schools. So you have the floor to Ms. Welsh for an update and review.
So, good evening. So the, what hap, we, actually, what we did was we consolidated several of our policies into one policy, and now because House Bill four thirty-seven has been, has been passed and signed, the part where it says that the Board of Education will now be responsible, have the authority to close public schools, we are able then to incorporate that policy into these policies, so you, what you see is that, can you just scroll down, just scroll up one second, Cindy, so I can show the titles geographic boundary, boundaries of attendance areas and the consolidation of schools? Because that now all of it falls under the consolidation, falls under the authority of the Board of Education. And I think we went through this last week, or last month, and we had a conversation, the question came up about how, how are the decisions made in terms of looking at projections and looking at how we come to these numbers, and like, do we consult also with the county? Are we looking at other sources? Like, what is the process in terms of making the determination to move forward? So we actually have with us tonight the experts that know this whole, do this process and can provide answers to your questions regarding that every, anything that you need to know related to the boundary process. So we have, of course, Dr. Strater with us and Ri- Rihanna McCarter, and then John Williams. So if you would like to start with your questions, any questions you might have from last time, we can do that. We also, I want to point out that Board Member Briggs did provide an email that had some, had questions and then, and comments, and then had some suggestions, and so that is, the board should also then, the committee should have the opportunity to discuss that, and certainly this, our administration that's here tonight can certainly answer some of those questions, too. So I don't know who would like to start first with their questions.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Welsh. Colleagues, the floor is now open for questions or comments. Are there any? We'll start with Vice Chair Fields, followed by Board Member Briggs.
So the issue of process, I think, is something that I'm really concerned about, because anytime you consolidate or close a school, it's a, it's a very emotional event. How much do we factor in the concerns of parents, students, even former students, when we start talking about consolidating a school? As we go forward, and we know there are always going to be population changes in the county, and when you look at our equity policy, we want to make sure that our schools are diverse and inclusive. So I would just like to get a sense of the engagement process when we consider making these decisions, and how do we make sure that community voice is included in part of that decision-making?
Oh, Rihanna, do you wish to address them?
Yep, I would be happy to. Thank you for the question. So I guess let me just speak to the most recent process that we went through, because these were the most significant changes in the district in over a decade. Over the previous ten years, I mean, we, you know, we did have some boundary changes, we had some consolidations of schools, but not on the scale of what was enacted in November. So, community engagement, first of all, in regard to closing schools, the community impact is one of the factors that's required by COMAR to be considered. And of course, that's part of our policy and procedure, you know, related to closures. So the most recent process we went to, went through lasted three years. We started in August twenty twenty-one, meeting with our, the consultants that assisted us with this. And that included a technical team, but also a community engagement firm, PEA. They're locally based, and they were contracted to help us to make sure we got the word out, that our communication was clear, that we were reaching diverse groups, underrepresented groups. And so we began the community engagement piece in January twenty twenty-one, and we conducted five meetings. We did three in English and two in Spanish. And the kind of goal of that was just sort of an education piece, getting people on board with, you know, we're opening nine new and replacement facilities over the next three years. We have, you know, we need to look at boundaries. What is capacity? What is enrollment? What is our process? And, you know, in terms of evaluating those things, so we really wanted to do that upfront work so that people could understand sort of, you know, where we were headed and, and would just have a better idea of the work that we do. So we followed that up. Well, first of all, we collected a lot of feedback. We had small groups that had a facilitator, and we were collecting information, feedback, concerns from participants in those meetings. And then, so that information, the community kind of input initially, and then the analysis of our data resulted in our first draft of some scenarios for the district to consider. And that included options for consolidating schools, select schools. There was three different variations of that. Following that, in November twenty twenty-one, we did a second round of community engagement. We did five meetings again, three in English, two in Spanish, and collected feedback on the scenarios. We also did a survey so that parents could tell us what their preferred survey was, why, rank, they were able to rank them. And then it also allowed free form comments. They were able to also submit emails that we would respond to if they had specific questions or wanted to question a piece of data that was, you know, put out there. They were able to interact directly with staff. And then out of the survey and the information that we collected from the community, scenario two emerged as sort of the most popular, or least unpopular, I should say, option, and that is the one that we ended up selecting. And then we worked to refine that with our transportation. We ended up dropping some of the changes, just, you know, based on, you know, the criteria that we, that we had. And then that ultimately resulted in the proposal that went to the board, so that kind of takes you through the whole process that we went through, and community engagement, like, really drove every aspect of the work that we did with that, with that process, because we knew it was going to result in some pretty significant changes for communities, particularly those where there are new facilities, which that's excitement to go to a new facility. But it also means having to change boundaries. And, and so we, we wanted to, we felt like we kind of got ahead of it, and then just kept rolling through the whole process, keeping the, the community engaged. And we also have a project website that we updated constantly with all the documents, everything we did through the process, all the recordings of meetings so that folks could go back and watch those, and again, they can email, or we have an account where parents can email us directly, we'll answer questions, look into things if, if need be, and so anyways, that's kind of a high-level summary.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Board Member Briggs?
Thanks so much, Chair Serong Ruiz. So I guess I'll start mine with, like, really quickly, just kind of running down the fact that I talked to a few parents, community members, people who were impacted by the boundary changes. And, and I definitely think that the, the process is incredibly thoughtful so far, and it sounds like there's a lot that has gone into it, and so that's definitely appreciated. Some of the gaps that I noticed, and I'll just kind of give an example of a family that wasn't here to share today. But was that there have been families that, you know, that, like most, most of us, they're working, and they've got, you know, other responsibilities and obligations, and so they're not as in tune with what, all the, all the details of what happens with the Prince George County School District like we are. And there was a letter that was received in October that said that there was a recommended boundary change, which per our policy, that's how we, you know, issue those, those letters. And when the final decision was made, the family, this family in particular, received that notice, but still was kind of under the impression that it was a recommendation for some reason, because that was the original language that was used. And then there's like this kind of surprise email in March that's like, hey, by the way, your child is having an open house at this new school that they'll be going to. And so, you know, I, I think this is just a part of the process, that no, no policy is perfect, and that there's always going to have to be any, you know, iterative process to kind of make it more refined. So I, I guess some of the questions that I was, that I'd like to target to you all is, one, and one, one additional piece that I want to add in there, caveat, is that this particular family went to the school and was asking lots of questions. What's happening? You know, when's the school boundary change happening? What does this mean for my family? And no one at the school had answers. Again, I don't think this is, you know, it was like malicious or anything. It was just people weren't aware. So my first question is, is there, is there a coordinated release when a final recommend, when a recommendation is made, or when a final recommendation is made? Is there coordination with the schools?
I can take that one. So what we, and I'll speak to the, again, to the most recent process, because I think we learned a lot with, you know, doing such a huge, such a huge project. So we, first of all, we have a advisory committee that was established in our administrative procedure a few years ago, and that has been really helpful. We actually meet monthly since we were kind of meeting like quarterly during the process, and then once things were approved, we'd be meeting monthly. And we, that group includes school leadership, so area office, area one, area two, area, not area three, because they don't have any changes, the area one and area two. So that we can all be on the same page about what's going on, but that's after the fact. So before the fact, before this, these changes were put before the board, we actually engaged principals. Twenty twenty-one, we engaged principals on this process, what was happening, what was rolling out, and, you know, sharing out that, that information, and there were some principals that we actually worked with one-on-one on their boundaries, you know, they may have had complicated boundaries, or they may have had, you know, opinions on things. Sorry, do you know?
Yeah, just because it's like a minute. So I just wanted to get clarity. Once the recommendation was made, was there, was there like a coordinated release or some type of communication with the school leadership and the administrative staff?
So it's my understanding that bef, right before, so that the, the space between when, I think, October thirteenth, when the board presentation was made, and then when the recommendation went to the board, that there was a meeting with the area offices, with the principals that were impacted, and those schools are listed in the PowerPoint that was presented, you know, for, I guess, for the first reader. That's, that's, yep, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, great. So, but not with the, not with the administrative staff? Like, it was just with the principal, but not with any of the additional, say?
Not that I, not that I know of. Yeah, so I don't, I, I can't really speak to how that process rolled out with the communication from the area office, like to the principals down to, like, registrars. Yeah.
Okay. And then, this is my last question. So was there any, do you all take into account when you're making the final decision, unique populations of students? For example, you may have a student that's in fifth grade, they're going into sixth grade, and then they'll be transitioning to middle school, so they'll be moving to a new school after that, and then after two years, they're going to a new school. So there's, there could be a lot of displacement for those particular groups of students. Is that factored into the decision?
Yes. So two things. Number one, the board granted a grandfathering provision, so any students that were going into fifth grade or eighth grade could stay, and we did a whole process to collect that information, and that's kind of still ongoing, because people may have missed it or something, so we're still monitoring that. And then the other thing is, we know, like, we're always thinking ahead with boundaries, because we don't want to ever come back to a community in like three years and say, we have to move you again. So we know the second round of blueprint is coming, and we, we already kind of looked, determined like what areas we think would be impacted, and specifically did not move any of those students, because we knew blueprint was coming in a few years. The second round of blueprint.
Thank you. Chair McInnes Murray?
Thank you. My question is around, once we've made the decision, and parents, some will still be upset, and some will still not want to move. How do we communicate to parents when we're beyond the point of changing the decision? How do we do that?
That's a great question. John, he may, he, he's kind of on the ground with that, so he may want to jump in after me with, you know, some details. But we've been receiving a lot of that feedback through our school dot boundaries account, which that's where we call, anyone publicly that has any kind of questions around boundaries can email that account. We get back to them within twenty-four, forty-eight hours. So, but John's been kind of leading that. I don't know if you want to say something about that, John, in terms of volume or just messaging?
No, just as you would expect, it's been pretty consistent. Kind of made that my main purpose over the last, what, six to seven months, is to make sure that I'm being consistent and clarifying what the options were per the policy. And so, yeah, so exactly, just making sure I'm clear about what the grandfathering clause stated, and whether other options that individuals may have in terms of working also with the student transfers, even though they, they weren't looking at actual boundary transfers, but, you know, there are a lot of mitigating circumstances. So I, I think we've done a pretty good job of working with parents to identify their unique situation per the policy, and trying to get back to them as quickly and as clearly as possible. And oftentimes, it usually means working with registrars and administrative staff at individual schools, making sure they also have a clear understanding of the policy and working with them to get the word out.
Okay, okay, but I, I guess my ask is, at some point, we're all decisions. You can't change them.
Yes, that's correct.
So, yeah.
So in our student information system, when we make the transition, students are identified with their new boundary school is. So as students go to enroll in that school or attend the school the following year, it'll flag if the student is in the wrong school. So it goes back to an enrollment and registration process. Now, parents can appeal, they can look for boundary exceptions that requires a whole nother process. Again, once the board approves the boundaries of where they are, we set that on a technology side, of which those boundaries are then set for our students. And so then, even from a technical perspective or registration perspective, those students have to go where they are, unless they go through some type of paper appeals process for our student record books.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, and I think that it may be some opportunities for the board to help with that messaging, because I've sat through several meetings where parents are complaining about decisions that have already been made. And, and from my lens, I don't see an opportunity to change those decisions. So that, that was helpful. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Board Member Boozer Strutter?
Yeah, thank you so much. So I went through this entire process and participated, I, I think, in just about every community meeting in twenty twenty-one. And the, you can see in the documentation that the Zoom participation was very high. We actually sold out one of them. We got over five hundred, and so the interest was high, and the ability to see the three scenarios of what could happen to your school was out since January twenty twenty-one. But because of the, all the distraction of, of the realities of, you know, the pandemic and school closures, Dr. Goldson recognized that we had to do the process all over again. Even though, from a board member perspective, I was pretty pleased. Even though from a board member perspective, I was pretty pleased with the engagement of everyone and. You know, everyone knew, you know, came to those and they probably represented just about every school. To some extent. That, that you knew if you were potentially going to be closed since January twenty twenty-one consolidated. Because your low enrollment had been going on for years. And I think. One thing that happened in this process is we just allow under enrolled schools to go on for too long. I'm just going to say it. You know, as someone who represents overcrowded schools and lack of resources. Under, underutilized schools should probably, you know, be, be really looked at and, and. Should have moved more quickly because that impacted a lot all at once. And everyone was looking for sort of equity and fairness. Who's getting a new school, who's just being consolidated into another old school. So I think, you know, we have a chance here to, to kind of. Recognize some of that. And there's this real fear in our system and others of, of. Accepting these schools that get down below fifty percent utilization. I mean, we just have to. You know, I mean, I don't think we're going to have that many. When I look at the numbers, I still see a few that I'm like. Are those numbers going up? Why did that schools, why is that school still there? So, you know, and the one thing, this was a consensus vote of the board, and I'll tell you, and I can tell you why. We all had pain. No district had no pain. And so we, but you also had to look for, as a board member, the, the good, you know, so. All these blueprint schools coming online, I could say to elementary school families. This might feel painful that, you know, you're leaving this neighborhood school for this one, but you will be going to the new Hyattsville Middle or the new. Sonia Sotomayor, Mayor, Middle and Adelphi. So as a board member, you really have to know. You really had to know all the moving parts. And one thing I did is I. Of all, I, I sent the data and the everything to. Specific parent leaders in just about every school where I could identify someone. And it was all, it's always easier when there's a PTO, PTA. And I made them analyze it. I said, I need you to have someone analyze this data so you can tell your school community what's to come. And that helped. So then I had that whole population of schools that did it and could communicate. And then I worked with my council member, Denny Taveras, to communicate to the schools that didn't have. Active, that may not have had active PTAs or needed more Spanish, Spanish language. That she could deliver that in Spanish language. So that partnership really helps. So if you're thinking about, if you're a board member and this is. Coming up in the future. Those are, those are some of the tips I would say, but. But yeah, I think the information was out there for a really long time. I think it's just hard information to accept and like it take, you know, I'm glad Dr. Gold. It was tough that Dr. Goldson extended the process for a board member because. The band, I wanted the Band-Aid ripped off and we could just start moving forward because this was coming, this is going to happen. But it, it, she did that. And, you know, I, I guess my question now is, we didn't finish the process. We did not move the bound, the, the recommendations for high schools. Are we still in this? Are we still doing this process? So I will end there because as a board member, I want to make sure I'm communicating like, are we. Going to move the high school boundaries?
Rihanna, you want to share the timeline?
Yes. So, thank you for that. Board member Boozer Struther. And, and thank you for your engagement. I saw you at every single one of those. Engagement meetings. So you were, you were right there along with us, hours and hours. So in terms of. Timeline, so we did develop. Boundaries for the high school. We know that we have high schools in the north that are in the planning stage. And some in the design stage. And so, you know, those are going to be another reality that we were, we're going to have to face in terms of who's going to go to those new facilities. We also have Crossland High School in the south, which there's a desire to create a. CTE hub there, which there already is, but just have that be a, just a purely CTE program. So we have some things that are coming down the pike. Where the new superintendent is definitely going to have to. Make some decisions on how to lay that out. And the other thing that I mentioned previously is the second round of blueprint. Which doesn't include any high schools, but there's definitely going to be. Have to be a process to figure out who's going to go to those schools because they are going to be larger than what's, what's there now. So. That's what we're looking at in the kind of midterm.
So I, I think what I'm hearing you say is that due to the superintendent transition, this sort of. This next phase isn't just, we're, there's a pause, there's a pause in this next phase just isn't. But you know, when we passed this, Dr. Goldson said, this will happen in a year. And what you're saying is that year is delayed. Am I, am I hearing that correctly? Because of some changes in superintendent, the new tranche of blueprint schools has been determined. Like, we know what year the new northern high school is now going to be completed, things like that.
So I don't know if there will be a delay or if things will be like, some things will be stacked. Up in a certain way. I'm not sure with our. Procedure. It really starts with that advisory committee, which we give them the data, the info, all of the background information. And then they. Create a recommendation to the superintendent and then the superintendent to the board. And so superintendent is ultimately the. Decider on, you know, what would be presented to, to the board.
Yeah, so I guess the short answer is we're continuing with that process. So there's, there's no pause, but the beginning part is what happens in the background before it becomes public and goes to the superintendent and comes, you know. And you start all your committee work. So that work is actually continuing. We'll be engaging in that work this upcoming year.
Okay, that.
Thank you. Board member Briggs for a second round.
Thank you so much. And thanks again for just sharing all of the, the details. I didn't have a chance to. Ask every question, but I wanted to clarify because I. Heard you, someone shared that there, the, the appeals process does exist. So is that for individual families or is that for? Is that like a, a group that has to come together and appeal the decision that the board makes? Because we're the ones who make the final decision. That goes out to the families.
Yeah, so. The appeals process is in existence. Regardless of any type of redistricting that occurs. So what I'm talking about is an individual by individual student that goes through a boundary exception process through the student transfer records office. So that's where you start getting at this point. There really is no appeals by a neighborhood due to. I don't believe my neighborhood should go to this school compared to this school due to redistricting. That process is, is done. So now within our student information system, all the addresses are set. So if there is a family that wishes for whatever reason to. Request a boundary exception to go from this school to this school, they would have to go through that process.
I see. And how is that communicated with families?
So if they go out to our people accounting website, they can see that as an option or student records and transfers office, you can see that as an option there. If they would approach their school, if they contacted their school or questioned. Where there is that they need to attend the following year, they would be directed to that process. You're muted, sir.
Thanks. Hit the button and it didn't unmute. I, I saw the letter that went out to families in October and I think at the, at the bottom, it kind of said like, there's the. Town hall process that's going to happen where communities can come and they can, you know, give their input about the final decision that then the board will vote on. And the superintendent will, well, the CEO will pass along. So with. This appeals thing, is there like an additional piece in that letter that goes for the final determination that says like, hey, here's how you can appeal this decision if you have issues? Or is that like they have to figure it out?
So I guess I'm reverting back to the earlier question of what happens after that's been finalized and the board approves and we get to that, that later piece. Because the question was. What happens then? I, I believe Chair Mekans-Murky, maybe you asked the question. Okay, that's where I was reflecting on. So once everything is solidified and done. The parent would then have to go through that secondary process. So what you're talking about now is as you go through this process, as we get to this closure of, of getting through the board approval and. When you get to that point of making that decision. Is there an appeals process itself for relocating neighborhoods and so on? That is. There's not, I don't, Rihanna, you can speak to this. There really isn't a solidified appeals process for that. It's more salting the feedback from the community. And trying to work that into the proposals, which would then go before the board, right, for your adoption of what that final proposal is. That up, clarify?
Yeah, and I just, I want to add one thing to that, especially with this. Big process is that we have students going out of schools and coming in at the same time. And so if, you know. We got a lot of people that wanted to appeal, you could have a situation where you don't have enough room because you have too many people that want to stay, but these new students are, are coming in. And so making sure everything stacks out, that's, that's part of what. Drives us in terms of like exceptions. Like I'd love to be able to grandfather everybody. I'm sure everyone would, but because of that in and out and the numbers lining up, that's, it becomes a challenge.
And the last thing I'll say, if my time is a.
I have to say, it's also one of the things I deal with on a regular basis, working with administrative staff. As to if there is in fact an option or what that is and who would the individual talk to, to hear.
Yeah, and I was going to say, you know, like this process is that the policy is up and we can kind of make some additional pieces to tweak it and make it stronger. And, you know, for those gaps that might exist, I think they can just kind of offer that wraparound support and. You know, I, I wonder if even to your point, Mrs. Carter, you know, around. Who, who qualifies for an appeal? Like, is it setting determinations around, you know, not just anyone can say that they don't want to send their kid there, but there has to be reasons that we can identify. Or the new superintendent can identify through regulation around that. So I appreciate you sharing all those things.
Thank you. For number Boozer Strather for second round. No, no, okay. Any more questions, comments, colleagues? Okay. Taken into consideration the discussion we had. I believe this policy should come back as discussion, Ms. Welsh. Or would, or colleagues, do you want to take action?
May I ask a question? Please.
Yes, go ahead.
So, remember Briggs did provide some recommendations and changes to the policy. And to the, to the revised policy we have right now. And one was that in looking at all the considerations that the. Advisory committee actually does review and consider where, for they even come up with a recommendation. He recommended that maybe there should be something. Another item that says unique pop, student populations that make, that would be significantly impacted by these changes. So I didn't know that if the committee was interested in incorporating that, I'm thinking of possibly. Special education classrooms that might be situated in one building and the movement of that, how that impact might be. I don't know. That's just something off the top of my head in reference to his suggestion. And then I think. I think, and I don't, based on everything that Rihanna just shared with us, I feel like there, all the steps were quite. You know, they were advertised, they were told, parents knew, but Board Member Briggs did. Suggest possibly under standards E, instead of using the language adequate notice that we might. Provide some other kind of language. Now it says adequate notice must be provided to the parent guardians of students in attendance. At all schools that are being considered for closure by the board. In addition to utilizing the PGPS website, written notifications shall be advertised. In at least two newspapers having general circulation in the geographic attendance area. Further score schools propose to be closed and the school or schools to which students will be relocated. So my question would be, and then it also says all the, at all informational means, the superintendent shall provide information requested by the board. Include but not limit to it enrollment projections, demographics and facilities utilization and utilization data. So my question to the committee is. Do you want to add any other language to either one of these? Items E, E or F. I, I don't know. And so I'm just, I'm throwing it out now that you also have all the information from. Are the people who deal with boundary changes all the time.
Right, thank you. I will recognize Board Member Boozer Strather first.
All right, thank you so much. I'm going to respond to where you noted. Can you say the first recommendation again about unique? Community or.
Unique student populations that may be significantly impacted by these changes.
Yeah, so I'd like to speak to that because I, I did submit a memo to Dr. Goldson where, where I definitely. Made that case. We had one situation in a different scenario, we was not impacted by the final scenario two. So I was making a case on scenarios one, two, and three, knowing only one of these scenarios would. Come to be, and it was scenario two, which took away some, like, which then eliminated some of the things in my memo, but. One was, like I said, I engaged parent PTAs of all the schools near each other. And we saw. That one school, if we move this one particular neighborhood. From the one school to the other school. The receiving school would just become even more high concentration of poverty blueprint community school. And the other school would lose a neighborhood that actually is keeping it on the edge of receiving those services at about seventy percent. Population rate for blueprint and Title I. And so, to me. That falls under that scenario that we, that if that had happened, we would have a school principal who now has even. More need. And students to serve in another school where a large percentage just lost the extra support. That they need. And so to, to me, there, there, I made that, I certainly made that case. I made that case around. A neighborhood that always kind of gets overlooked because it's on the railroad tracks. And we always are like, oh, we don't, they can't walk. We have to put them in a bus, so they're going to have to go here, even though their neighborhood school is right there. But it's not safe to walk and we aren't going to make that accommodation. So I made some of those cases. So I agree. You know, I didn't get everything I noted in the memo. On behalf of my constituents, but. You know, District Three also has, you know, a lot of new buildings and like, you know, we looked at the positive where we could find it in those cases for those students. So. But I, I, I would support having the opportunity to have those conversations.
Okay.
Thank you. Chairman could bring.
Thank you. I, I can appreciate both suggestions that Mr. Briggs made, especially the one about adequate notice. Because that term is ambiguous. I mean, adequate means different things to different people. So to define that. Could be good. So I support both of those changes. So I guess I would support this document coming back for more discussions.
Yeah, I, I also echo that call. I think we should bring this back for further discussion. And hopefully also maybe have some public input into this too in our next. Policy and governance committee meeting, just to hear. From the public. But I think Board Member Briggs has made some. Really keen observations and I'd like to see if we can consider those at our next meeting.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Welsh, if you could bring this policy back to the next meeting. With the recommendations that have been suggested.
Okay, I will put in some, some recommended language and then we can come back and discuss it.
Thank you. Alrighty, moving on, next policy for discussion. Is policy sixty-one thirty-nine. Test security and data reporting, Ms. Welsh.
Okay, so the. With that policy. And, oh, good, Cindy. Basically, the policy itself had a lot of language that was already. Well, first of all, let me just say, this policy is driven by Comer. Lays out very specifically in our regulation, state regulations, specifically what we need to do when it comes to test, test security. As well as what needs to be reported to MSD, to parents, that type of thing. So the policy is. The policy itself, the way it is, it's been sort of reorganized a little bit. I'm definitely put into our format. Um, but it really is almost step by step what is required by the state regulations. Uh, in terms of test security and um, and the reporting. So what I can do is just uh, take you through it really quickly and then we can. Talk more specifically, any discussion, whatever. Um, and you know, go further, further. So. First of all, there is the policy statement and it basically it just say, says that the board does recognize. Um, that these state assessments as well as our locally mandated assessments are an important part of the educational process. And that the board recognizes the importance in administering these assessments with fidelity. And that the results, along with other data sources, are accurate measures of students on schools' performance and accomplishing learning. I'll comes as well as you provides the data that can be used for the improvement in classroom instruction and curricular programs. So the purpose is to of the policy is to establish a fair and consistent guidelines to ensure that test administration. Of state mandate assessment and any other external assessment are secure, valid and reliable. And to promote the highest standard of testing integrity and ethics by educators and students. Um, and then the other piece is to ensure that the standardization, fairness and equity in testing and accurate reporting. Of the test data um, in Prince George's County Public Schools are followed. Um, uh, as outlined in the code of Maryland regulations. So those are the two purposes. So then there is a definition of a local accountability coordinator, which is the person who is the liaison between the Maryland State Department of Education. And Prince George's County Public Schools for state and um, locally mandated testing. And then I did, there's two definitions, one have to do with locally mandated assessments, the other one has to state mandated assessments. So as far as the standards, and this is where um, this comes directly from the regulations. It says that um, and we do have a as a department that um, of testing. Uh, that actually does is very involved and oversees the entire assessment process. Um, so it says the superintendent that's a department and a local accountability coordinator. To implement the Comar test administration reporting requirements. And these requirements consist of. Uh, for of and that the, I will say, point out that the administrative procedure that will go with this policy will be in great detail. Because there are a lot of specifics in terms of the whole testing process and the security of the testing. So there's, it talks about the procedures in terms of ensuring the security of the test materials. And then it talks about the fact that the uh, this, the department and the local accountability coordinator development implement annual training protocols. For all staff participating in the administration of the assessments. Um, and then there will be uh, random monitoring during testing administration to ensure that everyone is following all the rules that they're supposed to follow. Um, it also will prohibit existence of any kind of electronic devices, including personal devices. Um, unless it might be used possibly for an accommodation for a student or something, but in general was not allowed within the in the test, in the rooms where the testing's going on. That that the that office as well as the local accountability office will investigate all reported allegations of uh, testing improprieties. Um, and then also implement a testing administration record retention procedure. Um, which all testing uh, information is retained for up to six years after the date of test administration. And then implement that that um, uh, data reporting procedures. Um, and what the Comar states is that. First of all, there has to be accurate and timely collection and storage and retrieval of data. Uh, that's required by State Board of Education and then reporting of assessment results to parents and guardians of students within thirty days of receipt. By Prince George's County Public Schools, but no later than the fifteenth of September for spring assessments results. And then the process for delivering of assessments results to the parents and guardians. And then the last thing would be training on the um, appropriate um, reporting procedures. So the other pieces that I I did add into it is that um. Um, that all staff that are that are handling any new test um, material materials um, involving in testing directly or indirectly. Are required to sign off on on a certification of training form to show that they have been trained in everything. And this is done annually as well as um, they um, the board and Prince George's County Public School. Cannot take any kind of personal action against as a retaliation against an employee who would report. Information that they saw another employ um, employee uh, involved in some type of test security violation. And that, so that's, that's basically um, are the um, whole idea of not retaliating and the whistleblower protection. And then the last thing is the board and PGPS um, may though take personal action against an employee. If uh, after investigation, it's concluded that the employee was involved in reporting in the reported test security violation. And then basically it just uh, directs the superintendent to develop an administrative procedure to implement this uh, policy. We currently do have an administrative procedure, but it would need to be updated.
Thank you, Miss Welsh. Colleagues. Floor is open for discussion, questions or comments? Are there any? Seeing none, that means Miss Welsh did her job. Okay, for member breaks.
No, Miss Welsh did a great job. So it's not anything. I just wanted to clarify. So for the one provision that says. The electronic devices, I can't remember which one, oh, for four. Only thing I had a, just this is all electronic devices. And I know you said accommodations and it's like, you know, for different disabilities or things like that. I just want to make sure that that's against account health. Reasons to, I'm not sure.
It could absolutely.
Okay.
Alrighty, any other comments, colleagues? If not, Miss Welsh, I believe we could bring this item back for action.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Strater for joining us tonight. Feel free to stay for the rest if you'd like, but I probably want to go home. So thank you for joining us.
All right, thank you all for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Alrighty, moving along colleagues, the last policy for discussion is policy ninety-three sixty, meetings of the board, Mrs. Welsh.
So this, this is a policy that um, we have discussed many times. And I think back on January seventeenth, that was the last time we discussed it and um, and it was recommended that we um. Uh, hold off and not do anything with it until we got through the legislative session. And actually, it's very wise that we waited because there was one piece that we had where in within the policy, it said that. The the chair and co-chair would be uh, the board would vote on the chair and the co-chair of the board every year annually. But then we had a law that was passed last year that said it would be every two years. So then we switched it over to every two years. And then um, that now with uh, four thirty-seven, ten seventy-nine, it has now been switched back to one year. So I did, so we had, the last time we looked at this, we had, it was biannual and I just switched it to annual to reflect the change in the law. And then the other change that um, was in this policy that you guys, that you all had requested had to do with. The idea of um, notice um, when we move from a uh, in-person meeting to a virtual meeting. And I think I I'm not sure now, uh, um, Cindy, what does that just they throw it? Cause I'm not sure. It should be, I'm, I have page seven, but I'm not a hundred percent certain that's what you're going to see up when you scroll down. Yep, there it is. Perfect. Um. So I, the request was to put in language that said. Um, that there would be an exception to a one-week notice requirement would be in cases of an emergency such as public health or inclement weather. In which then forty-eight hours may be required. Um, and then I did include that down in the bottom two uh, where it says uh, majority board members must notify the chair in writing of the change. To a virtual meeting at least one week prior or in cases of public health emergency, then inclement weather at least forty-eight hours. To the, I I can't see the little piece that's uh. To the board meeting. So um, so those, I think those were the very last changes that were. Uh, requested, we, I know there was a conversation and my notes reflect and Dennis hop in there if I'm incorrect about this. Where it talks about the number of board members that make up a form for voting and we had decided to keep it the way it was at this point. Uh, the language and and if we had to, then we'd make changes. We would um, change it if the um. Once we got to that point, I mean, that's, uh, so I think if I'm incorrect, please let me know. But I think that that is it. We've made, you know, we have gone through and made. A lot of, you know, a lot of changes as we worked through the process since the very beginning.
Robin, I think you're a hundred percent correct. Those were the last few changes. My only concern is that I believe there may be one or two new board members since we had this policy. Um, I just.
Oh, you're right.
Make sure they've had an opportunity to review it. Um, if they need more time, they can let us know and we can bring it back for discussion. But if they've had ample opportunity or don't have questions. I'm okay with it moving forward.
Um, I will just for the new board members, I will say that uh, one of the things we were attempting to do was to really um. From a um, compliance perspective, trying to make sure we were really clear in terms of what's happening. Depending on the nature of the board meeting, what's happening in different sections, like in the consent agenda. Um, the whole idea of of for when you go into closed sessions, what what can be discussed? We incorporated all those things that can be discussed when you're in closed session. Um, conversation about the special meetings and I think also. Um, that we incorporated language that talked about that it would be that if the item, I think actually. Remember business rather you brought this up was that if an item comes up. Uh, what you didn't want to see was that you're sitting in a board meeting and all once this item comes up. And you are, it's all once called upon to make a decision and that you want a clarification. And we did put that language in under special means that the board may be called by the chair. Um, and that uh, if the meeting is for discussion, the topic of discussion must be cited. If the meeting is proposed an action, the proposed action must be cited. Um, so and that no uh, a business shall be transacted as semi except for which the meeting is called. So that was very clear for board members that you, you don't come into a board meeting thinking, well, we're just going to have a conversation. And then you all once you're being asked to vote on it and you really feel like you haven't had enough time to really consider it because it it just was just like that. So I think um, I'm just looking at um. Um, and then there's like the limits on like the agenda preparation. We also made some changes in there and clarified. Um, like when they, when it needs to be in uh, provided and also how many items a board uh, member can um. Request um, as a discussion item. Um. I'm thinking that's, and I do, I agree, there's so many pieces to it that you might want to just uh, have the time to re look at it before we finalize it. I think that's basically it though.
Okay, thank you, Miss Welsh. Colleagues floor is open for discussion. Start with board member Boozer Strather.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to raise if this is a good time to uh, address the issue of the board prayer. I think, you know, we've learned through um, NSBA and other um, other opportunities that. You know, we. Uh, I'm not saying to remove the prayer, but I'm saying that we have a single prayer and that I believe like what we see in our municipal. Um, meetings now that there's now um, an invitation to to pray. Um, in a moment of of silence instead of a uh, what used to be like, say, my town of Brentwood was the Lord's prayer. Um, we might, I I think we we should question if we're in compliance with this and um, I know. Uh, board member Fields, I think you had shared some information about that that you had heard at NSBA if you wanted to reflect on. On the, on that as well.
Yeah, yes, and um, uh, at a minimum a preamble before we have the board prayer because um. The manner in which we do it now, it's almost seems compulsory. And I think we have to give um, the public the opportunity to participate if they so choose. Um, and so that would be my concern um, as we move forward. Um, as well as sort of the diversity, the global nature of the prayer to make sure that we're being very inclusive. If we are going to have prayer before a meeting.
Thank, thank you for adding uh, your, you know, perspective and and so I get, I think it's something that we do need to discuss if we're. Going to modify how we do the prayer um, part of the agenda. Would be a good time for us to make a decision about that since I see that it is called out in this document. And that concludes my comment.
Thank you, board board member Boozer Strather. Go to board member Briggs.
Thanks so much, Chair um, Saran Ruiz. I just want to say that to the question that Mr. Woodley asked, um, I feel good about. The um. The policy I read through it, so I'm good, but I actually do agree with the 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 last piece around just being inclusive in the prayer. So I would actually. Say that I think that is something that we should update. Um, but beyond that, I I I'm in agreement with it.
Vice Chair Fields, I think he went on to you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Thank you, thank you, Chair. Um. I too uh, uh, have had the opportunity to review uh, the policy. Um, and I think it's really well drafted. Um, what I would suggest though is that the policy itself is almost a primer. Uh, to really understand board meetings and I don't know how often the public really reads our policies. And I think this might be a good opportunity to translate this into lame plain. Layman's language as a primer for the public. Because there are a number of definitions in a policy that I think are important for the public to understand. Um, and I would expand that also to include legislative terms. Because I think we often take it for granted that a public might understand what an agenda is. Um, you know, when you look at the the definitions, a closed session. So I think this is great. But I hope that we could somehow create a document that might be a little more user friendly. Um, for the public as sort of a civic education piece. On this is how your board conducts his business. Uh, but the policy itself, I think it's very well done.
Thank you, Vice Chair Fields. So colleagues, any other questions or comments? Oh, board chairman could bring.
Yeah, I don't have a comment. I like the policy and I can tell a lot of work went into uh, putting this policy uh, together. I agree with uh, Vice Chair Fields. Maybe we should put it in our um, handbook. Or something, or Mr. Fields, were you thinking about a standalone something?
I was thinking about a standalone uh, sort of um, document that that could be easily accessible for the public.
Okay, something that could be a hot, a hot link on our website that they could just click on.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Alrighty, based off of this.
One member supporter has her hand up.
Oh, hi, board member Dr. Miller. Sorry for not recognizing you earlier.
Oh, no, no worries. I know I'm not the part of the committee, but I actually really liked um. Board member uh, Field's suggestion about uh, layman's terms. And not to belabor that we don't understand it, but I think that uh, there should be some. Uh, I know that not everybody comes to this committee, but we should reiterate uh, our colleague to take a look at it and be familiar with. Um, this policy and the changes that have been made um, and recommended. Um, because I know we're going to take action of it on it, but I I really uh. Would like us to intentionally ask our colleagues. To have an understanding of the document so that we're consistent, consistent in how we conduct business.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Evero, Saron. Um, in response to um, Dr. Miller's ask. If we get this document approved, this policy approved with the next two meetings, now, does it have to go for public comment first? Okay. I was, well, we could give the rough draft to the, to the uh, board members at the retreat is what I was thinking. So. As a thought, thank you.
Thank you. So colleagues. Are we comfortable with?
Are we comfortable with taking action? I see your hand, Board Member Boozer.
Um, uh, action, I mean, are we going to make some? Minor adjustments based on the conversation or are you saying to move this as is?
Ms. Bush, if you can make so, some proposed changes, we'll bring it back. Um, because is the retreat before our next meeting? Let me double check. Or Cindy, if you know cue, let me know.
No, no, it's not.
Okay.
Yeah, next meeting. Oh, you mean the the Policy Committee meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, the board meeting, I'm sorry. The Policy Committee is on the thirteen, so it will be before the board retreat.
Okay, so Ms. Welsh, if you can bring. Prepare a new rough draft.
And do you want me to bring it back to action? Because I'm just thinking um. The Dr. Dr. Golson then would have the opportunity to review it and approve it. Before she leaves versus if we, if we just bring it back for discussion, it will then kick over to August and and. I I'm only thinking just the fact that she has a lot of experience. This would probably make sense to her and she certainly will be able to identify anything that might be possible issue. I don't know.
And Mr. Chair, if the only issue is uh the a sound of a moment of prayer or a silent prayer as opposed to a a. A rope prayer, um, I think that that could be fleshed out later on. Uh, that's the only issue that I heard from the board. If there are other issues that uh. Ms. Welsh would be changing. I don't know if there are.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, I'll just jump back in. I was gonna make another point and then. And kind of responded to the question you had put out. Um, is that we. We've added a pretty consistent agenda item of the uh board members' opportunity to do. Um, the shout outs and the um unsung partner. I know that there might be an umbrella term that we would choose for that, but. The listing of what is on an agenda doesn't include that and we've been pretty consistent for. I mean, I I think about a year that we've had that. That opportunity. So I don't, we may need to insert that agenda item here on page three of sixteen.
And I can do that.
And I don't know that it needs to be so defined as the terms we use, unsung partner and shout outs. I think it needs to have more of an umbrella term of board member.
Recognition.
Community recognition.
Yeah, community recognition, some, something that doesn't confine it to the model that we use today. Uh, that, that was my final point. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. So Ms. Welsh, if you can make the following recommendations and bring it back with updated. Version for action.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
I will do that.
Thank you. Alrighty, colleagues, moving along. We have three policies for reviewer action. First one is policy thirty five oh six, Public Charter Schools. So colleagues, we have a motion to forward the revised policy to the full board with a recommendation to seek public comment.
So move.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. Ms. Welsh, would like, would you like to give an overview?
Yes. So um, the, so but I just, I, I have thorough our conversations and everything that we've had with uh. Both the Public Charter School Office uh employees with us as well as with the feedback we have received from board. Uh, from uh community members and from Public Charter School people. Um, we, the po, I have not made any changes to the policy only because the, the big issue that happened previously. That we had a conversation about had to do with the idea that the, that the the um. Public Charter School Office was um had this prospectus step. That, that when they would, when a person who wanted to do a public charter schools, they would have to send in a letter of intent. And complete this prospectus step. And if the prospectus step did not meet a certain criteria. That the criteria that was um that had been established, then it would not um. They, it would, they would be told that they did not meet it and they would have to resubmit, redo it. And it would not be looked at for this upcoming year. They could not submit an application. And basically between myself, Dennis, the Office of General Counsel, we also consulted with other, another school system. Um, to, that um um has lots of public, uh public charter schools. And has gone through the appeal process with the state. It was pretty, pretty unanimous. Everyone felt strongly that. If there was ever an appeal that at the State Board would definitely rule against us. Because we did not actually do this application, uh decision was numerous reasons. One was it never really made it to the board to even to look at, to make a decision. Because ultimately there's supposed to be, that is based, the superintendent provides a recommendation based on the evaluation of the application. And then, and it can be either to accept the application or deny it. And then the board has the opportunity to review it and look at all the results of the evaluation and everything and the recommendation. And they make the final determination of whether or not they're gonna accept or deny the application. And so with the prospectus up in place, it never gave the board that opportunity. So that was not in compliance with the law. And then the second piece is if someone wanted to, to uh appeal that to the State Board, the State. Uh, there are very high probability that that would not be something we could win because it, because the law is very clear. That there is this application process and it's a hundred and twenty days. Once you receive the application. There's nothing about any other steps in the process. It's just merely the application. So um, we, we did meet and I also spoke with, with um Dr. Golson. As well as the Public Charter School and it was agreed that the prospectus step would be removed, completely removed. And they would not be including that in anything that they certainly, the, the um. Anyone that wants to do a public charter school can s- send in their letter of intent. As soon as they receive that, then the Public Charter School will. Charter Office will send to that person um an application for them to complete with directions and everything. And then they, they go through the whole application process. So beca, based on that, there was no reason to make a change to this policy, to the new policy that we just did. And this policy, if you recall from when I shared with you before, is almost again, step by step what is required by law. Uh, because there is a, uh, one of the statutes actually says what you must include in your policy for the um, for um, Public Charter Schools. So um, I basically, it just goes over the Board of Ed's authority. And then uh the, it talks about public charter school funding, student enrollment, school facilities, the reporting, audit reporting requirements. The evaluation of a public charter school and the refocation of the public charter school. It lays out all those pieces. Um, and then um it talks also a little bit about the audits. The financial programmatic compliance audits of public charter schools, all the reporting requirements. Um, it's, it's like pretty like straight lined with the law. So that's basically what I'm bringing back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Ms. Boozer Struthers, your hand.
Uh, yeah, I just uh want to say I think the concerns have been addressed and, and I. Think this is ready for public comment and I, I anticipate we're gonna have some comments on this.
Thank you. Chair Mickens Murray.
Uh, thank you. I see here that we still have a total of a hundred and twenty days from receipt of the application, correct?
That is correct.
So when does it come to the board? Because the board, I don't see here where it says. When the administration must give it to the board. Because if you don't have that, you must establish these board meetings where. Gotta get it on the agenda.
I, that is not, I, 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 that's not.
It is a hundred and twenty day timeline, so. No, the state doesn't tell the administration they have to get it to the board within ninety days. The board just has to make a decision within a hundred and twenty days. If you want to do an AP maybe. Where you say how much time the board must have to review it, that's more of an AP issue.
Or, or a board um. Polit, um, I know a board policy, but in our handbook, my concern is that. And, and I know that I'm not thinking gamesmanship, but I know that if the administration did not like. A uh, an application that came in and then you give it to the board and we only have maybe a month. Uh, to look at it, that could be a problem. So that is my concern, is the board having enough time. Uh, to review it, to get it on the agenda. And you know, we have to first read a second reader, all of that.
So that, so the first reader, it gives you the opportunity to um, it puts out notice to everyone that you're considering uh the, you know, the application. And then um the second reader of this where you actually vote. So there is, it's, I mean, you're really talking almost. They almost have to cut off a month out of the a hundred and twenty days just for it to, to get to the board because of.
Yeah, but my point here is that it doesn't say that here. That's all. It just says that the CEO gives it to the uh board, but it doesn't say, it doesn't have a timeline. And that's my concern, is that it doesn't have a timeline for the administrator to get, the administration. Uh, to get it to the uh board for consideration.
Well, and generally we put stuff like that. I would agree with Dennis. We do generally put that ki- kind of information into the administrative procedure. Because it's, it's directing staff that they must have that to complete it by such and such. So that the board then has a certain amount of time to be able to review it and um evaluate it.
Okay, so who determines that when you put it in an AP? Is it we tell you today or the administration tells us? I'm just asking.
We have the opportunity for the board to tell the administration what they would like. Um, since we get, we're basically getting the first bite of the apple, but I would think that it would be more corrob- corroborative. Um, so uh, yeah, again, um, if the board wants to take a position and say you want it at least. Thirty days before the a hundred and twenty days is up. Uh, you can do that, but I would say that you should probably talk to the um Charter School Office. And get some input from them, letting them know that, hey, we need as much time as possible to review it. What's the least amount of time? That you can actually do a full and 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 good review and get it to us so that we can do our job as well.
I mean, we have some other board members on this call and some of you have had more experience that, with this than I have. But I know this year the, the concern was first, we never got the application. So now we're gonna get the application. So when I read this, I just don't see when we will get it. But if you don't think that that will be a problem. Um. I can go with what the majority believes.
And, and I don't have an issue saying to the, saying to the um people that do the, I mean. Ultimately, I'm the final reviewer of the administrative procedures. So I don't have an issue ensuring that there's a timeline involved that uh that incorporates. So that the, so that both parties really have enough time because the evaluation office itself is a really extensive. But I absolutely understand that's a tremendous amount of information that's then being presented to board members to really, to, to review thoughtfully. And take time to look at before they make a decision. Um, if you had your druthers, like I would be interested in knowing what you think would be the maximum amount of time you, you think would be ideal. And then certainly share that with the, with the Charter School Office to see what their thinking is. And see if we can't come to something that certainly meets everyone's needs.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking you must put it up for first, you must put it up for public comment. First reader, then public comment, well, public comment first, first reader, second reader. As long as you can incorporate that into some days to allow the board ample opportunity, I'm good.
Do, that, does a decision like this that require public comment? Wouldn't it just go?
I don't know. Does it?
I don't think so.
Okay, if it doesn't require public comment, then the month would may suffice. Just depends on what's going on in state of Maryland.
And the only other thing, only other comment I'd make is just uh board people be prepared. Cause if we get three or four or five at one time in one year, that's going to be a long night for the board. So just kind of keep that in the back of your mind.
And maybe, maybe um, I'm just thinking, maybe one thing is to make sure you have notification that an application has come in. So that you're aware of it right from the beginning that there has been receipt of it and they're in the evaluation process.
That can help. Thank you.
And again, that should probably go on the AP.
Yeah, uh huh.
Thank you, Vice Chair Fields.
Uh, thank you. Um, and those latter points are my concern in terms of quality control. Uh, because we were, once we remove the prospectus step from this procedure. The prospectus allowed the administration to offer some recommendations if they saw areas of improvement. Before the application process. So now we're just going to get the application. And so I think we do need some administrative procedure that provides us with sufficient time. Because Mr. Whitley is exactly right. If we get multiple applications, we're in for a very long process. So I think there should be sort of an alert. Once we get an application, the clock should start. We should have a defined period for the administration to review and afford the application to the board. So that we'll have sufficient time to consider and make any recommendations on an application. Because some applications might be approved, some might be outright rejection, but some we may say. Hey, if you do A, B, C, and D, uh, but we have this one hundred and twenty. I'm assuming the one hundred and twenty day window suffices for everything. That, that we can't, that we can't come back and say after a hundred and twenty days, fix your application. So we have to get it all in and at a one hundred and twenty days. So the board will be sufficient time to review. If we were, if we want to make any recommendations to go back to the applicant, so the applicant can make those adjustments.
I'll, I'd, I'd have to do some research, but I believe the applicant might be able to waive the hundred and twenty days. If uh, if you said to the applicant, hey, we. We like your application, but A, B, and C need to be done. Um, I think the applicant might be willing to waive the hundred and twenty days if they thought they had the opportunity to get their application approved. But I'd have to do some research on that just to make sure.
But I do know though, that the, the state of Maryland does absolutely expect that once we go through this evaluation process. It's not like we just get the application, evaluate, and then you get this final thing. They're supposed to be constantly giving feedback to the charter school as they go through the evaluation process. And then say to them, you need to change this or you need to change that. So if in fact, let's say that we didn't do that and then they come back, the charter school decides to appeal. The one thing the state board's gonna look at is, did the school system actually provide enough uh feedback to the charter school? So that they knew what, what kinds of things they might need to change and stuff. And that whole process is supposed to be going on the entire time before it finally gets to the final applica, like the end of it. That moves on to, to the board.
I'm just gonna come up.
Go ahead, Board Member Briggs.
At the sake of time, we're, we're cutting it close. So um, I just wanted to say I heard two issues. Um, and just wanted to mention maybe some possible remedies to those issues. So the one thing is like, I actually fully agree with um Chair Mickens Murray around just protections in the actual policy. And I feel like it'd be nice if we just had something in there that says that the board and the administration. Will negotiate or, you know, identify a timeline that is feasible for both. So like, there's just in that policy that we have to work together to come up with a timeline, right? So that's embedded in there. That's a part of the process. And then as far as administrative procedure, I'm pro flexibility. I feel like we also should be very um, uh. Um, aware of the fact that there, to, to Mr. Willie's point, there are gonna be times where we'll have, you know. A large group of charters and then maybe we'll have other times where we don't. And so I think we should, we should, we should urge the um. The incoming uh administration and their team to be flexible in their language and that's possibly something we could bring up as for a board vote. Um, where we actually like kind of annually identify timeline that works. Um, and just have some language in the AP, but in this policy, we make it that it needs to be a negotiation between the board and the administration.
Thank you, Board Member Dr. Miller.
Hi, thank you. I know uh Board Member Boozer Struthers' hand is up when she's on the committee. I didn't want to take away from her time. Do you want me to wait till after her?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Miller. I, I'll, I appreciate that. I'll, I'll jump in. Um, they uh, I, I did want to note that, you know, when these new applications come, they do come with. Recommendation to adopt the charter school or to not, you know. So administration does do the due diligence and does have a, an opinion. And since I've been on the board, um, they actually, administration has brought forward. Uh, uh, does not uh recommend. And as well as the one, there's one that was recommended that is now operating. So I did, I just wanted to make that point that with, you know, it's not up to us. You know, we, we do get, you know, the feedback from the staff and, and frankly, the documents really do show it, you know, I, I. You could, you'll be, we'll be able to see the difference of those who are ready and those who aren't. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, back to you, Dr. Miller.
Thank you. Um, two things. One, I just, I want to say this. I know that um, I'm hearing that they're getting, because the prospectus part um was an additional step. I, I wanted to speak to that because it does take away what uh Board Member Fields mentioned in terms of quality control. And that was in, from my perspective, a step that our uh school, the school administration took as above and beyond what other school districts do. I'm wondering whether that should be still in there as an option. They don't have to do it. Because if you are turning in a prospectus and you have the vantage point of understanding some of the areas you need to look at. You still can fill out an application, but at least you have some insight of what things you should consider when you're filling out the application. And they did it, and it was above and beyond. Not making it, keeping it the same way, because I understand what you mean in terms of we, i- if we went before the state board, we may lose. But what I, what I, I, I want to just add is that they were going above and beyond by doing that work, um, in uh front-loading that work, that schools who wanted to establish charter schools had some insight of what are some of the areas that they were strong in? What are some a- areas that they need to um really shape up? And I think that, you know, if that's something they want to continue, I think we should be open to that. And only say that it, it's, it's an option, you don't have to do it. And whether or not you get the, the pros and the cons, you can still fill out an application. So they'll still have the opportunity to fill out an application. So that was the first part. The second part I was gonna talk about was timing. I want us to be very cognizant and not to be so rigid in our policy that we don't, that we uh shoot ourselves in the foot in terms of thirty days, twenty days. I like the wording in terms of collaborating with the administration. Um, I know as a uh board, um, we have the ability to call a special meeting if needed. So if this is something that we needed to call a special meeting for because we have so many, it could be something that we could uh put forward. So I, I don't want us to be so rigid that we say it has to fall on this time. So those are just comments that I wanted to share.
Dr. Miller, um, when uh Robin and I met with the um Public Charter School Department, it was kind of my impression from speaking with them that they wanted all or nothing. If the prospectus was not a part of the hundred and twenty days, I got the impression and, and jumping if you've got a different impression, Robin, that they, they wanted, you know, the prospectus to be separate and apart from the hundred and twenty days. But if they only have a hundred and twenty days, they don't have the manpower to do prospectus for uh potential applicants and still process actual applications in the hundred and twenty days. At some point, if they get more employees, that may be something we can bring back. But uh, the impression they left me with is they just don't have the manpower to do both.
And Dennis, that's correct. They, because the evaluation process is so extensive and it actually requires lots of people beyond their office who are also doing many other jobs. So they really don't want to cut that time short. Uh, it's the same concern almost that um, uh, Board Member uh McHenry's sharing is that do we, do they have adequate time to do a thorough evaluation then of the uh, of the application? If there were a prospectus. So they're, they're thinking that, because I actually, I did actually say to them, maybe you would like to make it like an optional thing. That could be, that might work. And that was like, no, that will not work. We won't have enough time.
And, and Robin, you, you'll follow up with me and Dr. Miller on the outstanding issue once you hear back from Dr. Golson.
Oh, so they asked that it has, they, the applica- they have um been notified, the school has.
Did you hear that, Dr. Miller?
They got an application and they are um, yeah, working on it, so.
Right, and just uh, and Dr. Miller brought up an issue. Is there a way to, uh, I guess we'll make the whole board aware of when applications are applied for, um, because Dr. Miller just had a concern about an application in her district that she wasn't aware of. So if there's something we can do with reference to communication with the individual board members as well as the entire board on applications. That's something that might, you know, you might want to consider for the AP.
Okay.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer Strader.
Uh, the, well, I, I was gonna make a point following Dr. Miller, but um, hearing what Ms. Welsh covered about the division. Um, I absolutely, I was gonna say, I totally agree with Dr. Miller that that step was actually in some ways a courtesy to the board because I was, I think some of us were pretty vocal a couple of years ago when one, an application came to us. And it was just so, obviously, the, the, the organization does not have the capacity to, to do this. I mean, the application showed it, but it felt like, I think some of us on the board felt like there needed to be some, I think I heard the term quality control around uh how far these get before they get on a board agenda. And I, I do think, you know, the diligence around that did, did come from, you know, the, the board at the time. So I did, I did just want to make that point. But I agree with, with, with Ms. Welsh is saying about the one or, one or the other. I, I fully get that point. So thank you for that.
Thank you, and I'll have Dr. Miller close our discussion.
Sorry, I just want to clear up, uh, Mr. Whitley, um, I think I wanted to clear up, it wa- the notification that I was talking about was about the situ- uh, the, this a- actual situation. It had nothing to do. And that's something that we can sort out internally. It's not something I need to, that needs to go on the A- AP. It's something that we need to sort out on the board side. So um, we, we can talk about that later. And that, I, that didn't have to do with administration.
Thank you. Alrighty, colleagues, are we pushing this policy forward for action? Or any objection to um moving the policy for action? Seeing none, Ms. Welsh, if you'll bring it back for action at the next meeting.
Okay.
Oh, actually, never mind. What, what am I doing? We, we are actually, there was a motion.
We are acting.
Yeah, we are acting on it. So um, it, there was a motion, there was a second. Alrighty, are there any objections to forwarding the policy for public comment?
Hearing none. Question, are we including Briggs' suggestion? Are we, are we going to send it forward allowing um, uh, Ms. Welsh to make that uh addition or not?
Are there any objections to adding this to the policy? To adding Board Member Briggs's recommendation?
Can you just restate it, please?
Yes, please. Mr. Briggs or Ms. Welsh, if you have.
Yeah, no, the only, uh, I was just saying in the, in the policy that there would be some language saying that the board and the administration staff shall work together to, you know, identify time, a timeline that works for when the application would get to the board for um, promoting. Illegal language, that makes sense.
Colleagues, any objections to this language? Seeing none, Ms. Welsh, please add this to the policy and hearing no prior objection. Well, are there any objections to forwarding the revised policy to the board for public comment? Hearing none, motion passes, policy will be pushed for public comment. Next policy is policy fifty-one, ten point three, transfer of students. Um, is there a motion to forward the policy with the recommendation to seek public comment to the full board?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved. And second, Ms. Welsh, a brief overview.
So the um, the policy, uh, the voluntary uh transfer request for students uh policy, it was basically revised to include the circumstances which is to may attend a school other than the identified residential boundary attendant school. Um, and then it um provides the fact that in addition to these, these, these uh cir- circumstances that that allow you to have a transfer, but the other issue has to do with is the school on the, a list of available schools. And that's determined by whether or not it uh, um, is over and above the state rated capacity. And then on top of that, if it isn't, and it's now on the list, the other issue is the class size of the particular grade, the class sizes of the particular grade that a student would like to be transferred into. And if those class sizes are too high, then of course the student would not be able to transfer. Um, and then it does provide some language related to with uh transfer is going to be um, uh, rescinded. And it also talks about the time periods for parents to request transfers and the communication of the transfer request time period so that parents know that um, when it is when they can request uh transfers. And again, I do want to point out from the information that I did receive previously that even if a stu- if a parent misses the um first go-round, they do accept the transfer requests in the summertime for the second go-round for transfer request. And then finally, the policy does uh talk about the fact it will not discriminate uh in this process, this determination of whether you can transfer or not is not, will not be based, uh, no one will be uh discriminating against based on um all the different protected classes. Um, and you did ask a couple other questions that I did get information about. Uh, one had to do with um, uh, you had um, when the terms of the transfers, so I think it was uh Board Member Fields, you asked the question, was there a hierarchy related to the reasons that um, uh, parents want um transfers? And is this really a function of climate in the school? So um, the um, I'm gonna read to you the list of how it was, what it was set up before. Because that, it was the highest number of reasons. First one had to do with safety. So that was the first one, that ninety percent uh, this came through, ninety percent of them, I guess, were related to safety issues. The second one had to do with bullying, harassment, and intimidation. Then um, the next one had to do with foster, foster care, which is really, you know, I mean, if a parent, if they, if the um, DSS uh a- actually places a student in a school district, you know, where, then we, the school system doesn't have a say in the matter. Basically, the student does get the right to go to the school. Then there, the next one was a special administrative transfers. Um, and generally, they were often requested by the Special Ed Central Office administrators. The next one was employee-based. Um, then um, and the next one was discipline, um, fresh starts. So like be, asking to be transferred um, to get a fresh start so that you're not continually getting in trouble in that particular school. Then the next one actually had to do a strange, a change of residence during the school year. The medical, so and not wanting to move, so can you stay and finish out the year? The next one is medical or psychological reasons. Um, and of course, that is actually then reviewed by our office, the, the, our psychological services or Office of School Health, which will review those requests. And then rarely, but they occasionally get a, a complaint. If the reason they want to be transferred is because of gang-related activities, but that's rare. And rarely do they get a request because the sibling is in a, um, is a ESOL student, a student receiving ESOL services. And they want to go to the same school as they, where the sibling is. So those are the two least amount, the reasons why. And then they asked the question, it was, the next question was, how many complaints do you receive from parents who did not receive a transfer for their schools? I think Board Member McHenry asked that question. And they said, uh, for, uh, forty or less during the open window. Um, um, uh, basically related to either the school or the grade level was unavailable. And then ten or less if the window is closed. So I guess that's what they received during that time period. And then the other uh question that was asked was, are transfers allowed on the online academy? Uh, or are there special requirements that need to be met in order to attend the online academy? And so actually, the online academy is not considered a school, it's considered a program. And so there's a whole separate admissions process into the program. So that is not even considered in the transfer process because it is one of our special type of programs we have. So I think that, that was all the questions that were asked last time.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Colleagues, any objections to forwarding the revised policy to the full board for public comment? Okay, hearing none, motion passes, and the policy will be forwarded to the full board for public comment. Last policy for action is policy fifty-one, fourteen point one, students existing before attainment of, students exiting before attainment of diploma or certificate. Miss, so colleagues, is there a motion to forward to the full board a recommendation to seek public comment for this policy? So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved. And second, Ms. Welsh.
So, so this policy, uh, just a quick review of it is basically um, uh, the, the, um, the, it's the idea that if a student expresses an interest to, they're gonna, they're going to um, uh, quit, they're gonna drop out, and they're not gonna finish up so that they can graduate. Then it's based on KMR, and it basically says that we as a school system, the school needs to first of all try to find this out and then provide the student tiered interventions and supports to address the student's individual needs. They're also supposed to work with the student, encourage the student to, to continue, remain enrolled in the school, participate in some other alternative program. And then they are also required to uh, uh, conduct an exit interview, an educational exit interview with the student um, and their parents if possible, um, for uh, to find out specifically what are the reasons why the student wants to drop out. And also to make sure that the parents and guardians are informed because these students are over the age of eighteen, they're eighteen or older, that they are, the parents are informed that this is what the student intends to do is to drop out. So that's, that's basically the whole, the whole policy in a nutshell.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Colleagues, any objections to forwarding the policy to the full board? Hearing none, motion passes, and the policy shall be forwarded to the full board for public comment. Dr. Miller, see your hand.
I am so sorry. Um, I was trying to raise my hand. This is just a comment, and I'm wondering, um, Ms. Welsh, does it include for students, and, and this is my thinking behind it, we, I, as um, a school system, we want to do everything we can to ensure that the student finishes. And we know sometimes they, they, you know what, I'm eighteen, I'm still in the uh tenth grade, I haven't done well. Uh, you know, I, I just want to do something else. But does it include provisions for counseling them? So that i- i- if this is, if this is their will, that we're not losing them, but we're giving them additional resources that they can seek out, be it job or be it, you know, obtaining their GED, be it, you know. So it may be that they just feel that the school setting is not for them. Um, does, does it allow for that, that um?
So, so I agree that when the section where it says, and this is getting right from the state regulations where it says that provides the student tiered interventions and supports to address the student's individual needs. So in that realm of what could be an intervention or support to the student could absolutely be the counseling. In fact, I would suspect that that's probably the more frequent thing that is provided to students than, than with anything when you think of interventions like educational or instructional interventions, I'm certain that's probably not it as much as it might be the counseling and that kind of support that the student might need. And we can, we can specify that in the administrative procedure too, just to make sure they're, that they are clear about the um, the interventions.
Okay, yeah, because I know, I don't want the po- policy to be against so rigid that if a student just says, this is not the setting, I, I do want to start my career, how can I finish? And we give them an opportunity to finish and still get their GED or high school diploma um, in, in a setting that, that uh works for them.
Right. I think that's the whole goal of this, is to be able to try to find some other, some way so that they can make it through and end up with their diploma.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Alrighty, having heard no objections, motion passes, and the policy is forwarded for public comment. Next up, we have um, so a policy that received public comment. So policy fifty-one, sixty-eight um, was voted by the full board to seek public comment, and we received four public comments. Um, so Ms. Welsh, if you do a overview of the four comments.
So basically, um, the, all four comments were very, they were, um, people want to make sure there are AEDs in the schools and that people are trained to use the AEDs and that they're available to anyone that might need them. Um, they, um, so they're very positive. They did, one comment does talk about the fact that they that uh so if you recall, the high schools have the most AEDs, then the middle schools, and then the elementary schools. And part of that's also driven by the law that talks about athletics and what's required when you have athletics going on in the school. And this one comment, um and as a parent who has shared this information is thinking that it doesn't ma- really matter whether, what grade level it is, that we should have the same number of AEDs in elementary schools as that we would have uh in middle and high schools. Basically, all grade levels would have the same number of AEDs as a high school has. And so that was that comment. And then um and then another comment says that they think that it's really important that um employees also are are trained in um AED, uh utilizing AEDs. And I will share with you, um to be able to train and get everyone certified, all our employees, I that I don't see that as an actual possibility just because of, first of all, the many, many, many competing professional development requirements that employees haven't, especially our school-based staff, they have lots of re- requirements. However, what we, uh there is a um, a um module in safe schools that actually talks about AEDs. And so we had decided that for this upcoming year, we are going to put it in under and along with our mandatory, we have a list of what's optional that we think, and we uh write a little note that we think this is. Even though this isn't mandatory, it's very important, and we're gonna put it out there because I would suspect, like, I watched it. I wasn't required to watch it, but I watched it just because I thought it'd be helpful to have the information. You never know when you might have to use an AED. And that doesn't certify me as an AED user, but AEDs actually are pretty easy to follow. Many of them have the directions right on them. But just having that knowledge is just helpful, so we are gonna incorporate that into the uh optional section for the training for this upcoming year.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Welsh. So I'm gonna do a motion, then we'll go into discussion. Um so colleagues, may I have a motion to forward to the full board, policy fifty-one sixty-eight automated external defibrillators with the recommendations to advance consideration as first reader at the June eighth Board of Education meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second now turn to Ms. Boozer's rather.
Yeah, I'd like to address the comment about elementary school, which I um. Yeah, I realize now, you know, the, doesn't make sense that they're not in elementary schools. I mean, we now have schools being built for eight hundred students, that's a lot of adults in the building every day. Um and of course, uh adult guests who um uh not to say that no young student could ever uh be in a situation, need one, but. So can we explore that a little more around the elementary um schools and having these? We could talk a little more, uh Ms. Welsh, you could talk a little more about that.
So if I recall, and I'm just trying to look back at my emails from what I had received from um from Safety and Security Services, who is actually responsible for AEDs. If I recall, the elementary schools only have one AED. And I think the high schools have at least three AEDs. Um so it is definitely a reduced number of AEDs in the elementary schools.
So um, thank you for that. I get, I guess what I'm trying to understand is you know, we get pretty specific in these middle and high schools. So if there's one in an elementary and now we're building schools that were built for, you know, four or five hundred students, now we have these eight hun- you know, these massive eight hundred um seat schools, that's a big, there's now, I mean, should it be more about um adequate? To serve the population of the school? Uh I mean, is that, should that be more clear? Or is that, or will administrative procedure address what I'm bringing up? Like that there needs to be that one, one of these in a, a big school is not gonna, could, could end up being too far away.
If it's a K through eight academy, would that not fall under a middle school? Or would we address that in the AP? Uh uh cuz as we move toward academies as opposed to pure elementary schools, would that not rectify that situation?
Well, we have elementary schools with eight hundred seats now, and we have more on the way that are just K to five. Cherokee Lane being the, the newest, you know, and I think about how large, how long it would take to transverse, you know, that school in an emergency. So that's um, that's, you know, what I'm thinking about now. And Mary Harris Mother Jones actually is already that big too. Um there may be more that I'm forgetting.
I, I, an answer to your question, though, I think if that is, that's really um. So that's an item that is a money item, cuz it costs money to uh incorporate more AEDs into the buildings. I'm not sure how much they cost, but I'm just saying that, and certainly, um it's probably, I'm thinking. Um I I an administrative procedure wouldn't necessarily dictate that as much as probably maybe policy would dictate that. Sort of like when we think about like the sustainability policy, if you recall, and we had a lot of conversation about that and some of the, some of the things that were in that and how that budget, I'm thinking that might be, might be, I think go in that route.
Excuse me, Chair, I need to go to another meeting, I'm sorry. I I just have a hard stop. Okay, so you still have enough people to vote. So I need to go. Bye, guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate you coming. Alrighty, so I'll turn to Vice Chair Fields, then Board Member Briggs.
Yeah, I, I think the problem here is that so much of this in the hi- at the high school level is tied to athletics. Um and I remember this when my, my daughter was an athlete in terms of the requirement on a high school location. Uh the other issue I think is just a cost issue, uh in terms of if we expanded it, expanded the number uh to elementary schools. Um and the other comment that I do remember hearing, and I had raised this concern also was just the notification issue when there was an incident in the building. Um how quickly uh the individuals who are trained to use this would be notified? And I think someone mentioned trying to use technology to do this because most of the times, if you're using one of these devices, it is a matter of uh minutes or seconds to get to someone who is um in a, in a condition that requires it, and that time matters. Um so in a large building, uh making sure that you could get to uh the victim in time so that the device would be helpful before any other uh medical attention could be given, I think is important. So I, I think if we do make the decision about elementary schools, we just, we just need to accept the fact that some things cost. Um it, it's sort of like, I, I make the same issue with security in our buildings, right? We had a discussion about security and about the different approaches of security at the high school, middle school, and elementary school level. This is sort of similar, and I think the board, we just have to decide um if it's a priority that we provide these uh in a way that we, we are sure that even at the elementary school level, there's enough coverage, then I think we just have to take that responsibility and do it.
Thank you, Board Member Briggs.
Thank you, and apologies for, I think you might have heard me eating earlier. So I um just want to echo that I think it's really important that we do um for, for safety reasons, we do have adequate kind of included in there because I think that um. I just think about, you know, having been a former teacher and being in, in the school and like how, how really significant that is to see for the stress that it puts on, I think educators to like, know that there's a possibility that, you know, if you have eight hundred kids in a school, then you have two of those. Um that's a challenge. The other thing I'm gonna say is I also agree with the idea that um is I was looking through the policy, that the note around where it's placed in the building. Um I think it's really important too, you know, it should be somewhere in the building that is easily accessible, and I don't see that. As I was quickly looking through the policy again, I didn't see that in there. Um Ms. Welsh was thinking that we should probably have that in there in, in, in the uh, in the policy somewhere.
Ms. Welsh, would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, um and we can, um, I'm, I'm actually, um right, wanting to write a note and I dropped my pen, so I was looking for my pen. Um no, uh we could um make sure that there is language that says that about the accessibility of the AED. If I recall correctly, and I um, that the, uh well, actually um. For this, I thought, and I can double check on this, uh that in the elementary schools, there, they are supposed to be well, uh actually, the safety officer sent me an email that says, the first unit is always mounted in the wall cabinet near the gym and the others are strategically deployed around the building to give maximum coverage. Um so I'm guessing probably they put it in the gym also for, they prob- probably have it mounted by the gym in the elementary schools too because if anything were to happen, like when they're doing PE that uh for a student or something, they would have that available. Um but of course, I would say that, uh working in many elementary schools in my lifetime, that would, that would probably be the last place I would think that the AED would be because I would think it should be up by the office or something, that's where I would be looking for it. Uh but I can double check on that and, and um, you know, we can have further conversation as, but I would have to get more specific information for you. I mean, you could incorporate language that says is the AED um is placed in a place that is highly accessible or something like that. Of course, some of our buildings, um and I know you've all been in them numerous times, so depending on how they are built that just because you say maybe they're gonna be near the office or they're gonna be here, that might not necessarily make them highly accessible just because of how the buildings are, are structured. I mean, I guess it would be better to just say highly accessible, um something like that.
Yes, okay, I agree, oh, sure.
No worries. Thank you guys for bringing this up. Therefore, um I'm not sure who had made the motion, but whoever made the motion asked that you rescind the motion.
There's another hand.
Or remember Boozer's rather?
Yeah, I, I was just trying to dig a little deeper to see if my concern could already be covered by these emergency, you know, plan, action plans that could raise for an individual elementary school, the, the, that they would need more than one. And I did note that the um term freely accessible during all school functions is under um um B three um D, which covers, I guess, what Ms. Welsh, which you were saying that during, you know, how we close buildings off during athletic event, events, that one always has to be available, so I see that uh listed there. But I, my concern is still more about between this policy and procedure, could an elementary school request more than one? If they, if the emergency plan revealed, that would be the best um course of action.
You're talking about their school safety, their emerg- their big emergency plan for their school, is that what you're referencing?
I'm, I'm referring to the, how the policy is written, the venue-specific emergency action plans, you know.
Oh, that's the one for the athletics, yeah.
Someone who's writing the action plan is outlined here, the AED coordinator. I'm just trying to determine if, if, if it doesn't prevent an elementary school from saying for, say Cherokee Lane saying, you know, when we were in the old building, anyone could get to the AED in X amount of time, but now in this new building, we're realizing they can't. So I just wanted to make, I was just looking to see if there's something, making sure that wasn't prevented.
So that, that piece that has to do with the emergency action plans, that, that is specific to uh athletics, I think. And so that actually really, elementary schools aren't even involved. So there's nothing there to actually help with it, but I'm just wondering if we had a little bit um stronger language that talked about, uh I know we have freely accessible, but uh something I don't know that might be a little bit more clarifying because I'm just thinking purpose of policies to say what you want to say, and then the system has to determine how they want to go about that. Uh but without direction from the Board of Education in terms of um more, more um AEDs, like say in the elementary schools, if that, if that what you're thinking um. Because of all the other competing interests, you know, when you think about the budget, that doesn't necessarily mean that would, would show up unless the board actually specifies that.
I believe it's been the, uh it, it's the pleasure of the, these members of this board that uh we explore how we can have more uh devices in, in elementary schools, so maybe, Robin, we can go back and discuss it and see if we can come up with some language um addressing that. And I think I'm hearing that you want the same number devices in elementary schools as are in high schools or what, give us a little more guidance, or are we looking at the number of students?
Size of building, transfer, ch- time to transverse in the building, you know, and this could mean old buildings that have had lots of extensions added onto them, and it could mean the brand-new buildings that are just much larger. So getting back to uh adequacy of, of access to the device. Access, yeah, during s- school day or during uh evening events, you know, but, you know, but those are usually I think they're usually placed closer to the common areas, the gymnasium, caf- cafeterias and those that are combined.
And Robin, is that information that you can get from the administration with reference to the the size of building, the size of elementary schools with reference to the number of devices?
I can, I mean, I can certainly try. I will see what I can find. The other thing I will also find for you is the cost of the AEDs because that's, that is an important factor too. I mean, and I, I'm not even gonna make a statement in terms of what it might be cuz I have no clue, so I will, I can get that for you too.
Right. I think the chair to accept the motion be withdrawn so that we can put it back out for discussion.
Yes, I see your hand, so I'll close discussion with Board Member Briggs.
All right, and I'm gonna keep it very quick. I was just gonna say, I wanted to echo that I think we need to just either keep the language very, I'm sorry. Very general um with adequate, or um uh cuz my concern is like if we kind of go based on numbers or other things without talking to the administration, I just, I would prefer that we, I would feel more comfortable you brought someone who actually is in the buildings every day and knows and has a um deeper insight there. And the other thing I was gonna say was, um, um, I'm just curious, since Welsh, to the money piece. You know, at the bottom, there are references. I'm not sure if, I'm just just curious, if we adopt a policy here and we make a change and that policy shift implies that we need additional funding for something that's covered under a different policy? Um do we, do we note that here? Do we bring that policy back up for discussion? I was just curious if there's any um process around, like if we're asking for more money and this is tied to another policy um that is that, is that a part of this um process? And hopefully that question's clear, and if not, I can try to clarify more.
Um as far as the actual money piece, I'm not really very clear about how that would all work. But I will tell you this, that we are, in fact, I have already been working on putting together um the list, the policies to start working on for next year. And clearly, if there was a policy this year that impacted a policy next year, like for example, I can tell you the one that has to do with uh that the recommendation to rescind the recruitment policy, but it, first, we need to update and um expand the uh discrimination policy. So it's sort of like, so that's on the, already on the list for next year. So it's like, yes, if a policy we're working on impacts another policy, then absolutely we'd want to put it on the list so that we could make changes to it.
Thanks.
Thank you, and so uh so Ms. Adlin, I, I'm not sure who made the motion.
Sorry, it was Mr. Fields.
Mr. Fields, so if you, so graciously you rescind your motion.
This is Chairman, I rescind the motion.
Thank you, um here in the, this, discussion today, uh we will hold this item um to allow the time for Ms. Welsh, Mr. Willie um to take a further look into this policy and bring back something um more so, and more bring back information driven behind what was discussed today specifically with elementary schools and um, you know, just the access that there is within schools. Um if that's okay with everyone, we will move along. Alrighty, thank you, everyone. Alrighty, next on the agenda, follow-ups from previous meetings, all of us will be posted on Board Docs upon receipt. The next Policy Governance Committee meeting is June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at The next Policy Governance Committee meeting is June thirteenth twenty twenty-three at five P M. And lastly, thank you everyone for a great meeting, thank you everyone for joining us, anyone who watched. And, you know, I'll just keep it brief, so colleagues, are there any additional comments from anyone before I request to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, is this your last meeting with us?
I, no, I will be, I'll be here at the next one, I'll be here at the next.
Just wanted to make sure.
Got one more, I think. Thank you though, alrighty, so. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn? It's been moved, it's been properly moved and second to adjourn, the May sixteen twenty twenty-three Board meeting, any objections? Hearing none, I adjourn this meeting at seven twelve P M, good night, everyone, thank you.